Welcome to the McKinney Podcast, the show that celebrates what makes us unique by nature.
We are proudly hosted and presented by Riskwell and Fred Schott Photography. Your co-hosts for this wild and crazy adventure are James Jenkins and Fred Mahusai.
The McKinney Podcast is produced in collaboration with McKinney Chamber of Commerce, McKinney Economic Development Corporation, Vis a McKinney, Community Impact Newspaper, and One Heart McKinney.
We are the independent voice of the good people of McKinney. All financial backing is provided by Riskwell and Fred Schott. Every word you hear on this show are the opinions of James, Fred, and our guests.
We're bringing you the perfect blend of interviews, current events, and hot takes. The only rule here is if it's not happening in McKinney, it's not on the McKinney Podcast. Let's go.
We are so grateful that you chose to spend your evening with us tonight. So just a big welcome to you.
All right, to start off, please, everyone rise and we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with the same justice for all.
Thank you. You may have a seat. Want to take a quick moment to, again, welcome everyone for being here, the supporters of each of the candidates, both for Place Three and at-large. We also want to welcome Mayor Fuller and his wife, May Lee. Thank you both for being here. And then also, current City Councilman, Justin Beller, in Place One. Thank you for being here. And of course, Jurei Feltes, who is current sitting City Councilwoman, who is here and will also be onstage this evening. So thank you so much for all of you being here. And we have some sponsors to thank.
We do. We have some amazing sponsors. Personalized Touch, Goodness Steak Seasoning, Trimark Home Construction, Stacy Weaver for Carlin College, McKinney Cares. He's coming. And James and Sabrina Craig.
We couldn't do this without sponsors, so we are incredibly grateful for their contribution and also being part of the community. So we want to explain exactly what's going to happen this evening. The debate's going to happen in two parts. So in the first segment, we will have Dr. Jurei Feltes and Tammy Warren, who are both running for the Place Three. They will have their debate section. And for them, they will have two minutes in the opening, two minutes in their closing statement, and they're actually going to have two minutes with each of the individual questions, since there are only two of them. And then we will have a break where you will be able to grab some snacks and bottled water. We will reset the stage for our at-large, where we have five candidates. Those candidates will each get two minutes opening, two minutes closing, and there will be a one-minute timer on each of the individual questions, as well as rebuttals where that is concerned. Fred and James will be on the floor. If you were here for the mayoral candidate debate, we made some shifts and adjustments. So James and Fred will be on the floor. Who in here participated in the Slido poll for questions? Oh, I see some hands. Awesome. So some of the questions you're going to hear tonight were actually crowdsourced. And we've been running a poll through Slido where people were able to ask questions and up-down vote questions that were posed. And so they're pulling from questions based on that Slido poll as well. We also want to welcome the online, we are streaming on, yes? Nope? Okay, we're recording. Okay. So we're recording, and that, the recording will go out both on the McKinney Podcast as a podcast and then also on the YouTube channel. So those are going to be the ways for folks to be able to see the debate after this evening is concluded. So those are all of our main announcements. So there's only one thing left.
Without further ado, here's James.
And Fred, our moderators. Come on up, guys.
All right, well, thank you so much, everyone, for showing up tonight. And we truly appreciate your involvement in our city. Now, raise your hand if this election is important to you. All right, look around and notice all the empty seats. We need to make sure that other people know that their vote matters. But the fact that you chose tonight to come out here to hear from your candidates means a lot to us, means a lot to them. So for James and I, we say thank you for making this a priority for your evening.
You know, it's a bit of an emotional thing, honestly, because when Fred and I started the podcast a year ago, one of the things we said we wanted to do was, at some point, eventually, you know, get to be, you know, perhaps maybe someday, moderators of a political thing.
And here we are.
And here we are. I will say, for anyone trying to plan a live event, it's not for the faint of heart. I don't recommend it. It's a whole lot of work. You get people, 375 people as of about an hour ago, and I'm looking around here, I'm thinking, there's not nearly 375 people in the room right now. But hey, we're going to press on and have a great night. Have we already thanked the sponsors? Because the sponsors made it all possible. Everybody's good. Did you tell them how good Goodness Steak Seasoning is and how everyone should vote for Stacy Weaver? And how everyone should get their roof done by Trish and Mark Littlejohn? And how everyone should be nice to each other on McKinney Cares? David and Sabrina Craig said, "Don't say anything about us. We don't need anything."
We're going to say it.
So all I will say is, David, Sabrina Craig, thank you very much.
That's right.
And Helen Barilis with Personalized Touch. I know you and I both have a lot of personalized touch in our closet right now. So thank you to our sponsors, could not do it without them. And anything else?
And tonight, you know, these are your candidates. If you agree with what they say, then let them know, because they need to hear from you. So we encourage your applause for what they say. Now, if you disagree with something that someone says.
Boo.
Yeah, I mean, you can grumble over it, but we ask you to be respectful and not shout-out names, not throw accusations at them, but you can express your disapproval of what they have said.
We have two armed officers tonight, and they're just itching to toss someone out of here, I promise you. So.
But we do want to say thank you to McKinney PD for coming out here and supporting us tonight. Thank you so much.
There you go.
Awesome.
Okay, shall we?
Let's move.
Okay, yeah, the first race is really simple. It's easy to manage time because there's two candidates. I want to thank the citizens of McKinney for not running for District Three. It makes it easier to have a debate when there's only two candidates. So Dr. Jurei Feltes, Ms. Tammy Warren, would you please come out here? Okay. Did we talk about timing and format and everything? Okay, well, they knew it, but now the audience knows it too. So ladies, start your engines, I guess.
Well, I got to pull the first comments, and I'm happy for that. I want to thank you all first for being here. You guys are engaged citizens of McKinney. You care about what's going on here, and you know how much your vote matters. And I appreciate you all for being here today. My name is Dr. Jurei Feltes. I have the pleasure of serving as your District Three Representative here in the city of McKinney. I have been on council for four years. It has been absolutely the pleasure of my life to serve this community. I moved here 14 years ago. I moved with my two daughters. At the time, they were two and three months old. And I was looking for a place to grow some roots and to do some good work, but most importantly, a place where my kids could really thrive and prosper. And so I felt like I found the best community in the world, and it's been a pleasure for me to raise my kids here. But I'm running for reelection, because we are at a pivotal moment here in the city of McKinney, in terms of seeing unprecedented growth that's still coming towards us. And we need balanced, smart leadership to make sure that we continue to prepare for the challenges that will be facing us. Three main points for me. I want to make sure we remain the safest city, one of the safest cities of our size. And we've done a good job doing that so far, but we need to make sure that we continue to do that when we get to 350,000 people. Number two, we need to continue to address our infrastructure, planning for new infrastructure, and addressing the old infrastructure that needs attention. And finally, I want to make sure that we hold on to what is the most dear to us, which is this small-town, unique charm that makes McKinney what it is. That takes strategic leadership. And we've done good going from 130,000, when I got here, to now 250,000, and we still maintain that small-town feel, and I'm really proud of that. That is the reason I am seeking your support in reelection here in the greatest city in the world, here in McKinney, Texas. Thank you.
Ms. Warren, you have two minutes.
Yes, hi. For those of y'all that don't know me, my name is Tammy Warren. And my husband and I moved here in 1999. We are both sixth-generation Texans. We moved to McKinney 26 years ago, same house, same neighborhood. It was our joy and our privilege to raise our children here. They are proud products of McKinney ISD. They all three graduated from McKinney High School. As soon as we landed in McKinney, I got very, very involved. I'm just that kind of person. I got involved in my community, my church, and our kids' schools, and I just was always ready to lend a hand and make a positive change wherever I could help. And now that my kids have grown on, and they're grown, and they're all doing their own thing with their own families, I've had more time to get involved in the city. And I have really, really enjoyed going to council meetings and digging in and advocating for things that are important to you. And in the last few years, it's been my privilege to serve on the 2024 Bond Committee, the 2024 Charter Review Committee, the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Committee, and the McKinney Armed Services Memorial Board. It's been an honor to serve with people who sometimes have different ideas than me. And we come to the table and we figure out a way to figure out what's best for McKinney. By day, I am an executive assistant at Emerson. I've been there 21 years, same job. I have learned to do things efficiently and effectively, and I've earned the trust of the executives that I support. So my four, I have four points, actually. The first one is that I think that we can work together as a community to find an alternative to the airport expansion. The second thing is, what I'm hearing from my constituents is that they would like to slow down the multifamily buildings, the apartments. The third thing is, I want to champion to keep your taxes low. And finally, I will always support term limits. I am for smart growth and safe streets. Thank you so much, and I look forward to talking to you.
Okay, these questions have been crowdsourced using the Slido platform. We're going to alternate which candidate goes first with each question. This is, all of these questions are for both of you. And now that we have a significantly increased amount of liquor stores and vape shops in McKinney, "Do you think that it's possible that this might lead to an increase in crime?" Dr. Feltes, you go first.
There's a really funny saying, "You don't pay me to think, you pay me to know." Right? And what we know is what our crime rates actually look like. In November of 2022, 75% of our voters voted for liquor sales here in the state, in the city of McKinney. And what we're following closely at all times is what that impact is on our crime rates. We are still one of the top safest cities here in McKinney. Does that mean we have no crime? Absolutely not. Any growing city will always face these challenges. So we are charged with the duty of making sure that our public safety personnel have everything that they need to continue to keep us the safest city of our size. That means we support a growth in the workforce. That means we support equipment needs and innovative ideas that they need to bring to this community to do that. And so we're going to do that. Now, one of the challenges with liquor stores, in all honesty, is some of the restrictions from the state level. I don't know if you're aware of this, but the state does not give us the ability to zone liquor stores the way we want to zone them. And that is a big problem. There is a requirement that you have to have 500 feet away from school districts and cities, but sometimes that is not enough. And I don't like for our authority as a city to dictate what's good for us to be taken away by the state. So I have initiated conversations with our state legislators to discuss this issue. I want to make sure that we don't have a clustering of a bunch of liquor stores in the wrong place contributing to a problem. It is much easier for us to deal with or to minimize the impacts of crime if they're not clustered together, if they're not in certain neighborhoods where it might be a problem, and if we can't control if it's a big box or a smaller box kind of liquor store. And I know some of that is, you know, a little bit controversial in terms of like, you know, rights, in terms of development, but I think in terms of what's good for our community, our city needs more authority on that.
Ms. Warren, two minutes.
Yes, so I'm one of the ones who voted against the liquor stores. I was raised Baptist. So that's me. Whether or not they will increase crime or not is to be seen, but I do have full faith in our McKinney Police Department to take care of whatever comes down the road. As far as the CBD stores, I am not a fan of the CBD stores at all. I've seen a lot of research about the misleading labels. They are not regulated, like, at all. We've got kids going in there and teenagers going in there and buying whatever they want, and the labels are not true to the amount of THC that is in there, and they're doing harm to our children. So there are actually some things going on right now in the state legislature to try to actually get rid of those. So I have faith in the McKinney PD to take care of whatever they need to take care of down the future. And I agree with her on the clustering, and that's my answer.
All right. Your next question, Mrs. Warren, you're going first. "How do you plan to address McKinney's long-term infrastructure needs, including things like water and transportation, while ensuring responsible and sustainable development?"
Okay, so are you talking about the ETJ? You're talking about in general?
We actually decided to make the ETJ a separate question, because that's a rather complicated answer, and we wanted to give you both time to address just the ETJ specifically. This question is about infrastructure, like water and traffic and whatnot.
Well, my first answer would be, what I'm hearing at the doors in District Three is the amount of apartments that we have in McKinney is causing stress on our infrastructure. Apartments are fine. My husband and I were married 12 years before we were able to afford our first house. But when you talk about putting a lot of people in one space, you're talking about stress on the roads, you're talking about stress on the water, you're talking about stress on the electric grid, stress on the police and fire, stress in the schools. To put a lot of people in one place is just very, very difficult to manage. And when you have accelerated growth like that, it takes its toll. So what I'm hearing in District Three at the doors is that they would like us to slow down on the multifamily housing. We're going to grow, but let's grow smart. Let's grow a little bit slower if we can. Let's take care of our infrastructure. I have a minute left, so let me talk about money for a minute. Infrastructure takes money. We are way behind in our commercial tax base. We've got to beef that up. We, that's how we fill our coffers. We are going to have to have some more restaurant and retail in this city. And again, slow and steady growth. But that's how we fill our coffers, so we can take care of these infrastructure needs, take care of our roads. And we've got to quit spending our money foolishly. We're draining our bank account right now with projects that are controversial. And so we've got to be very more, very careful about how we're spending and very careful about what we're bringing in. Slow and steady growth through restaurant and retail is the answer for this city's financial needs.
I agree that we shouldn't cluster a bunch of apartment complexes together, which is why we have not done that as a council. We have a housing crisis across this country that we are challenged with trying to solve. And McKinney City Council overwhelmingly supports single-family development. We have Painted Tree, which is in District Three, 3,500 single-family homes that are in that area. Honey Creek is coming just north of that, 10,000 house tops, and largely, single-family. So we always balance in favor of single-family, but we do recognize that when I moved here in 2011, interest rates were low and housing prices were low. I would be willing to bet that both of us would have a much harder time purchasing a house today if we tried to move into McKinney. So we've done everything that we can to address the crisis in a balanced manner, addressing workforce housing options as part of that. The question really is about infrastructure. And we realize that the infrastructure here in McKinney needs attention. We've noticed that. We've had a presentation by a Public Works Director who let us know our roads need more attention. We found out we didn't have an adequate road maintenance plan, and we've implemented that. We hear a lot about Eldorado in District Three. I've heard my opponent bring it up a number of times. I'm happy to report, there are $4.5 million invested in Eldorado. It's under design right now, and it will be under construction before the end of the summer. We address infrastructure. The growth is coming. We plan for new roads. We plan for water. We work closely with the North Texas Municipal Water District to make sure that we have enough water supply for our residents, but we have to continue to look into the future and make sure that we balance everything. Our infrastructure is strained, but mostly by people passing through McKinney, not McKinney itself. It is Princeton and Frisco and Anna Melissa. And so we've got to be prepared for that, and we have to implement good plans to make sure we address that, and that's exactly what we've done for the last four years.
Okay. We have, we have two follow-up questions, one for each of you. Get one minute each to answer this. Ms. Warren, you referenced wanting to see increased development of restaurant and retail projects. As a councilwoman, how specifically would you support that, using cooperation between CDC, EDC, and council and other resources at your disposal as councilwoman? How would you go about promoting such retail and restaurant development?
Well, the first thing I would do is I would quit giving away our tax dollars if someone wants to move to McKinney. If they want to move to McKinney and have a business here, they need to come in and build their infrastructure first, and then we reimburse them with our tax dollars. We need to quit giving away land, and we need to quit giving away our money. So it's slow and steady growth. We work with the people who want to come here, but they have to do the work. They have to earn it before we hand them a paycheck. So that's how I would do it. I would do it, like I said, slow, steady, think about what you're doing, leave plenty of green space as we do it. We've got to have room to breathe and room to grow. I'm a big proponent of our parks and rec, a big proponent of green spaces. So again, careful, smart, planned-out growth. Think it through. Does it make financial sense?
Does it make financial sense? Does it make financial sense to have absolutely no influence on the direction of commercial development in McKinney? No, it doesn't. I prefer economic development that brings the highest possible economic value to you, the resident, so that we don't have to lean on you for property taxes. If you leave it to the market, guess what you get? You get Highway 75 with a bunch of drive-throughs and car dealerships, and I'm not, the car dealerships are awesome. We have enough of those. What we want, what we are hearing from our residents is that we need more restaurant, retail, and entertainment destinations in addition to office space. That's what this council has done. We have added $4 billion of commercial ad valorem value to this community. We have added 4,000 jobs in the last four years since I've been on this council. And that is the kind of smart growth that our residents expect from their leaders, is to make plans that absolutely serve as the maximum benefit return on the investment to our residents.
Time, Dr. Feltes.
Can I have a rebuttal? May I have a rebuttal?
What's up? Yes, ma'am. One minute.
We are actually six.
Microphone? Mike, Carl? One second, please. We're having a sound difficulty. Would you check your mic again, please?
Test one, two?
There you go. One minute, ma'am.
We are actually $6.5 billion short every year in our restaurant and retail income, up $4 billion in the past few years. That's a lot of money. That's a big loss. We are losing about $135 million in taxes every year, because we've bought too many people here, and we have not kept up with the restaurant and retail income. People are moving here, but they're not spending money here. If you go out to eat, most people are going to Legacy West or Frisco. You go shopping, you're going to go to Allen Outlets, you're going to go to Fairview. We don't have enough restaurant and retail here to sustain the city. And your property taxes are going to keep going up unless you start getting serious about, about bringing your commercial tax base back up in McKinney.
So what is it? Are we going too fast or are we going too slow? Because what I heard just a second ago is that we're developing too slow, and now we need to speed it up so that we can balance the commercial tax base.
No, ma'am. I said.
We cannot have it both ways. I'm speaking, please. We cannot have it both ways. What we are charged with doing is making sure that we influence positive development, and we've done that. Four years ago, we didn't have District 121, or Hub 121, or Restcrows, or the high Disney commercial that's on 380 in Harden. Those opportunities for us helped to allow us to continue to lower the property tax rate every single year I've been on council, because we have made it a priority to listen to the residents. What amenities do you want? Listen to the business community. What do your workers need? And those are the things that this council has provided.
Okay. In the interest of moving things along, we're going to go ahead and move to the next question. There's actually a debate tonight. Okay.
That's good.
Everything was so tame in the mayor's conference. I was like, you guys want to get at each other or not? Okay, thank you both. Okay. So let's talk about the ETJ. "How do you suggest we address the gigantic issue that is the extraterritorial jurisdiction?" For those in the audience, that's the Swiss cheese. If you look at the map north of 380, it's a mess up there. "How do we provide a path for voluntary annexation without leaving many local citizens without vital services who might want to be a part of McKinney?" And this one is Dr. Feltes first.
Yeah, the ETJ presents a lot of big problems, because we've had some changes on the state level about annexation, forced annexation. And I have to tell you, I understand what our Texas legislators, where they were coming from. Because if you have someone who's living on 10 acres of land, and they want a rural experience that they're living in, I don't think we need to bother those folks. What was missing is a density trigger. So now you've got 50 people living on 10 acres of land, and those people do not contribute to our roads, to our libraries, to our parks. And we are, as the taxpayers here in McKinney, now burdened with their portion. And we need to find a better balance. What are we doing here in the city of McKinney? We've done the best we can to provide the infrastructure, of course, to our residents, but we know things like water are a big deal, and it's very expensive to provide in the ETJ. Fire service. We were getting reimbursed from the county, I think $1.50 for every $4 that we were spending out there. And we realized that it is, it should not be on the backs of our taxpayers to provide services for people who refuse to annex into the city. So the county is having to come up with ways, and we support them in coming up in ways to provide those services. Otherwise, they will lose their homeowner's insurance. You don't have fire service, you're going to lose your homeowner's insurance, and we do not want to see that happen. But we encourage people, if you want to keep great, responsive, fast fire service, police, use our parks, use our libraries, come be part of this community. And I think having a feel of acceptance and showing that we are responsible with the tax dollars that they would be spending in this city is the avenue to getting, getting them to voluntary, voluntarily annex in with us.
Ms. Warren, two minutes.
I don't think anyone from the ETJ is going to want to volunteer any annex into McKinney and pay property taxes. They're pretty happy not paying property taxes. The issue is, how do we keep up with the development that's going to come out there, and how do we pay for that? A couple of ideas. One thing that they're doing in Austin, Austin is having a water issue right now. So a lot of developers are coming in, and they don't know what to do about the water. So they are charging these developers upfront impact fees. That's the maintenance fees. We can do that with the developers in the ETJ. Get that money up first. The other thing that we can do, again, like I said, is make them earn the reimbursements. They do their, their infrastructure, we reimburse. We don't give, we don't give out money. We don't, we don't hand them a paycheck. We don't hand them a gift. We say, "You do your work, we'll reimburse." That's one thing that we can do. But it also goes back to, we've got to have enough money in the bank to be able to take care of the ETJ and the needs. If we're spending money foolishly, if we're not bringing in enough money with that restaurant, retail tax income, we're going to be in trouble in a few years. I'm telling y'all, we are going to be in trouble if we don't get serious about the slow and steady, smart growth.
Dr. Feltes.
This is why it's super important to understand exactly where you are. There are impact fees. They are already implemented. No one can just move in here and develop a property and not pay impact fees for the utilities that they're installing. So we do ensure that that is absolutely an issue that we address immediately when someone brings us a plan. We tell them how much those impact fees are going to be before they even put a shovel in the ground. Okay? In terms of having enough money, we have a healthy budget and a healthy fund balance for the city. The CDC has a very healthy fund balance for the city. So does the EDC. And this is why we do not unnecessarily spend money. The reason why we have those healthy fund balances is because we've been able to, once again, increase our commercial ad valorem tax value by $4 billion in the last four years. We're going to keep moving in that direction and ensure that we are spending your tax dollars wisely and providing the things that you want to see in this community.
If you want to respond, go ahead.
If you have so much money, how come you're having to borrow so much money for the airport? And you're borrowing from each other. The city is borrowing from you.
Don't you borrow money to buy your house?
Dr. Feltes, please let her speak.
That's, that's my question. We are bleeding money right now for the airport. We're bleeding money right now. You're borrowing from each other. We don't have plenty of money. Then why do we have to get all the loans? Why do we have to have so many loans that we're going to have to pay with interest? Your money, interest. It's ridiculous.
Same concept of taking a loan out for a car, even if you can pay cash for it, you don't want to empty all of your savings out. You still, you go and apply for a loan and get a car, but you buy one that you can afford to pay month to month. It is the same concept for very large capital projects like the airport, like District 121.
We're going to have a question about the airport. You guys don't worry about that. But along those lines, Mrs. Warren, you've mentioned several times that we are foolishly spending money. What would you say is one of those foolish things?
Well, obviously, all the money going for the airport that the voters didn't want in the first place. That's what I have a problem with. So that, and also the way that they did the amphitheater deal. I mean, the money on that, have y'all seen that? They're going to pay back 4% of 1%, of 2%, of 3% over seven years, over 10 years. I mean, my goodness. Nobody would run their family this way. Nobody would run their business this way.
Dr. Feltes, would you like to respond to that?
1%, 2%, 4%. I know it's very complex. It is very complex, which is why you need a leader who understands complex projects, who has experience in balancing multimillion dollar budgets. This is why it's important to get the information so that you are well informed to make good decisions. The airport, let's talk about the airport. It was purchased in 1977. I was not even on the earth to make part of that decision. Okay? In 1977, the airport accepted FAA funding, which means that we cannot restrict any aeronautical use on that runway. And 2013, the city purchased the airport from the county. I was not here to sit at that table and make that decision. In 2018, there was a decision to expand that runway. I was not at the table making that decision to expand the runway. I got here later than that, and now we are faced with a decision about what to do with a long runway that can accommodate very large jets on, and unrestricted. My preference, it is not, you all, a difference between commercial service and nothing. It is commercial service or cargo service. And I know that our residents would much rather have a commercial passenger service than a bunch of cargo planes flying over our houses 24/7. No restriction on the time, no restriction on noise, 18-wheelers driving in and out of our community. I don't want to see that for this community. And I know that our residents don't. I don't care how much you support that you are anti-airport. I know you would not rather see cargo service. I don't want to be the next alliance. I want us to be uniquely McKinney, a nice airport, small, but mighty. And it's going to be a great economic benefit. We are going to ensure that it is a great economic benefit to our residents here in McKinney.
All right. So before they go any further, because we do have a, some submitted airport questions, but on the topic of funding, and Mrs. Warren, you're the first to respond to this. How much has your campaign currently spent and where is the major source of your financing?
Well, I'm very proud of my fundraising. I raised almost $20,000, $20,000, small donations. I have put in $25 of my own money. And that's not because I don't want skin in the game. It's because my husband and I cannot afford to have skin in the game. And I told my supporters that when I started. I said, if you want me to run, you're going to have to support me. And they have. Almost $20,000 later, here I am. And I've spent almost all of it. I'm doing pretty good and I'm proud of that. And I've still got more fundraising calls to do. But I've gotten probably less than five people that have given me $1,000 or more. Most of it is, I had one guy drive the house and give me $5.
All right, and Dr. Feltes.
So I have had the absolute honor of accepting some donations from my friends here, from people who believe in the vision and the future of McKinney and believe in what we're doing. So I am proud to say I've had many of my donations from that. I've had some from people who understand in the business community, what is at stake here in this process of selecting the next person to sit in District 3's seat. And so I have accepted some donations from that. I will say I have put in from my own personal funds, probably about $6 so far, and that's just in the campaign. What have I given to the city of McKinney? It is countless what I have given to the city of McKinney out of my own pocket to support our nonprofits that I believe so much in, who are doing great work in this community. They help to support social services. They support children who are at risk. They support seniors who need help. And I am so happy that I've had the opportunity to hear and see so many nonprofit organizations in this city and to be constantly funneling support to them from my own pocket. And it's been the honor to do that.
This is a follow-up question for both of you, and it was actually a question on the slide out. And we're just going to lump these two together. It makes sense that way. In the event that you, as a councilperson, were faced with a decision that was an obvious conflict of interest from a party, a business, a citizen, anything, where you received a campaign contribution, are you willing to commit here tonight and on a recorded video that you intend to recuse yourself in such a conflict of interest situation, should you be elected as councilperson?
Absolutely. It's not a problem. Okay, can we be real? It's politics. I have faced this. And I stand on every bit of integrity that I was raised with. I will never be bought by any person, ever. There is not a dollar high enough to buy a vote from me, so I don't even feel like there's a need. Do you need a public statement? Absolutely not. I will never, ever be put in a position where I even need to be recused. If there's an issue where there needs to be need for me to step aside, I absolutely would. But I guarantee you it won't happen. I think everyone in this community who really knows me, including the business community, if you really know me, you know that that's not something I would ever accept. So it never even comes to me anymore. So.
Okay, well, we haven't talked about the airport yet, so let's talk about the airport. All right. What is your position on the proposed expansion of McKinney National Airport? And how will you balance economic opportunity with the concerns of nearby residents and the broader community? And Dr. Feltes, you get to go first.
Yeah, I mean, I've already talked about kind of my vision for the future because I have a preference in terms of how we guide the future of the airport. And I absolutely believe that encouraging commercial passenger service is a much better option for our community. If you look at the makeup of this community, the people who live here, the industries and the jobs that are here, we are much more suited for commercial passenger service than we are for cargo service. What that provides for us, we, we have an, an economic impact study that's going to be coming forward very soon. You will see what the annual economic impact, even with a few flights a day in the first couple of years, what that would provide for the community. But it also provides us some educational opportunities. We have the opportunity to expand a pilot program that's already there. We have an opportunity to pull our kids in and help them to achieve careers in aviation, maintenance, and operation. There are other airports, smaller airports, just like ours, that have done some of this. And I want to make sure that we use this asset that has already been around. The decisions were made way before me. All I can do at this point is to try to make it better. And I think we can make it better by making it an inspiring thing for our children to see and give them the opportunity to achieve careers in aviation that otherwise they wouldn't even think about. So that's my position.
Well, we've had aviation out there for McKinney High School for years, maybe 15, 20 years. So that's nothing new. My position on the airport is the same as District 3's position on the airport. They voted 60, 40 against, and it should have stopped there. If the public does not support a project, you don't move forward with the project. I don't care how wonderful you think it is. I don't care if it's going to, you know, be the next big thing in McKinney. If the public does not have support for it, you don't move forward. Period. The economic impact, I'm not buying the numbers. I'm not. My research tells me, and I've seen this, 97%, 97% of airports this size run in a deficit. They do. You have to have at least a million passengers or more to make a profit. And if it runs in a deficit, and we're back, going to have about 200,000 a year is what we're slated to have. So if it runs in a deficit, then it has to be subsidized. Who's going to pay the subsidy? You. You're going to pay it year after year after year after year. And this is the first I've heard of cargo service. I didn't know that was a choice. That wasn't on a ballot. I didn't know that we were dealing with cargo service, so that's something new. But, you know, my, my, I think the problem is that there is a tone deaf problem on the council. I am hearing this at the doors. Y'all are not listening to what the people want for the future of McKinney. That is the issue. And I'm very concerned about the environmental impact study. I saw it. It only studied the airport. It did not study the land around the airport except for 660 feet. I'm going to tell y'all, y'all know what? Right now, the dumping of the airport, all that biofuel, guess where that's going? South and east, right into Lake Levon. That's our drinking water. That's our drinking water. The further east you go in McKinney, the worse it's going to get. I think somebody ought to go out there and test the drinking water in East McKinney myself.
I don't disagree, which is why it's already been done. And that's what an environmental study is for. They look at the impacts of not just noise, but pollution and what it might disrupt in the surrounding communities. The final environmental impact study has been released. And from that, we know that there are already 400 flights operating at McKinney National Airport every day. If we add three to five or 10 flights, that is not going to have a substantial impact on anyone around us. Is it no impact? I did not say no impact, but it's not a substantial impact. And so I feel completely, please forgive me if I don't accept your research, but I accept the research of the professionals who do this work day in and day out. Now, we are listening to the residents. The residents voted down a proposition to leverage your property tax to issue debt for the creation of a terminal building for the, for the airport. We heard that loud and clear. I have met with thousands of residents across McKinney. And I can tell you, after knowing and explaining what my position is, they understand that the-
Time, Dr. Feltes.
Commercial passenger service is actually a good thing for this, for this community.
Okay, next question. What is your vision? And Ms. Warren, you go first here. What is your vision for McKinney's economic development in general, not just restaurant or retail? I think you covered that well earlier. Thank you. And how will you ensure that growth benefits all residents while preserving the character of the city?
Well, I've got to keep harping on the same old theme because economic development is economic growth. You've got to have money. You've got to bring in money. We need to bring more corporations here. We need to bring in the high-paying jobs. I don't understand why they're not coming to McKinney. It seems like they go to Frisco, Allen, and Plano. Why aren't we getting the good paying jobs here? I don't know. I have been very, very fortunate to work at Emerson for 21 years. That is the kind of job I'm talking about. Hello, Mr. Tarble, by the way. He worked there and he retired there. That, the jobs that I'm talking about are hire-to-retire jobs, which is what, what a company like Emerson is. We need more of that. We need those good jobs that offer jobs all the way from the production line, all the way up to the executive line. So we need that. But I'm serious about that commercial tax base. You've got to bring in that restaurant and retail. That's where our economic growth is going to be. Again, I'm, I'm going to keep repeating it, slow and steady. We've got to keep our dollars in McKinney. We've got to keep bleeding out to, to Legacy West. We've got to keep bleeding out to Allen. We've got to keep our dollars in McKinney. That's what's important.
Dr. Feltes, two minutes.
Once again, $4 billion in commercial ad valorem taxes, added to your, added to the city of McKinney and 4,000 jobs. We have seen the expansion of our largest employers, Raytheon, Encore Wire, Independent Financial. Why do they expand here? Because they can expand in other markets. They do not have to come here. But it's because we provide for them, not just, when we talk about infrastructure, it's not just roads. It is economic infrastructure. How do we build a network for our business community to thrive in? And that's what this council has worked hard to do. I know there's a lot of criticism about restaurants and retails. I had the same criticism when I moved here, which is why we have pushed for that. It may not be coming at the speed that we all love, but guess what? To get it here faster, you have to incentivize more. And that's just not a priority for this council, council to incentivize every single thing. We have to have a more balanced approach to it. But once again, you have restaurant and retail. Look at, look at downtown. Look at how far it's come, even in the last four years. Look at 380 and Harden. Look at District 121. Look at Hub 121. We didn't have those things four years ago. We hear you loud and clear. We know that you want more of these things here in the city. We're going to keep, continue to move in this positive direction, but we're going to do it in a balanced way that does not waste your taxpayer dollars.
Go ahead, Mrs. Warren.
I just want to say, when I moved here in 1999, the three major employers in McKinney were Raytheon, Encore Wire, and Emerson. In 2025, the three major employers are Encore Wire, Raytheon, and Emerson. Where are the jobs?
Once again, we brought 4,000 jobs. Raytheon had a $300 million, $380 million expansion. Guess what? That brought in more jobs. We've created a technology hub here. Guess what? We're getting brand new industries here that didn't even exist before. And trust me, those things are going to grow here in the city of McKinney. We will continue to work and be strategic. We're going to be inviting to the business community. And we're going to make sure that we continue to provide high-paying jobs that our residents want and that our kids will return to the city of McKinney to come back and raise their family.
Okay. Audience, forgive me for this. This is a fairly nuanced question. I'm going to ask about the TERS, the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, because a vocal group of people on social media comments like to talk about the TERS and how economic growth isn't actually economic growth. I'd like both of you to address the use of TERS in our city as, as a growth strategy and exactly how that works in the long-term plan. Because TERS are supposed to be temporary, but we have a couple that don't feel temporary. Would you both please address that? Ms. Warren, you can go first.
TERS, if I've got the acronym right, stands for Tax-
Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So what that means is like downtown is a TERS zone. The airport is a TERS zone. The airport and a little bit more industrial part of McKinney is a TERS zone. So that means that at the time it became a TERS, their taxes, their, their property taxes that they returned to the city that was frozen. So whatever is increment above that going forward, they get to keep. So that means, it depends on when the TERS was, was established. But property taxes have gone up a lot in the la, in the last few years, so they're getting to keep that money. So downtown is basically reinvesting in itself. The property taxes, most of them do not go into our general fund. I hope that makes sense. Same with the airport. The TERS money, the tax money in the airport stays with the airport for the most part. Now, those are, TERS is supposed to be used for blighted areas, to build up blighted areas. The question is, is downtown McKinney still a blighted area? I would have my head cut off if I even talked about messing with downtown McKinney. I love downtown McKinney. But there might need to become a point, there might need to come a point on city council. I'm not saying I'm going to be part of it or anything like that, but, but you're right. It is supposed to be temporary or it can be temporary. That's just throwing that out there. I'm not saying I'm for it or not for it. I'm just trying to explain that, yes. That's how it works.
Dr. Feltes.
Yeah, fundamentally, the TERS is really just a tool that we have to make sure that redevelopment happens in areas where otherwise redevelopment would not happen. And it's a good way for us to encourage growth in our downtown and in the airport properties as well. The good thing about that is, as it's growing, your property taxes are not leveraged to make that development continue. It is the development in and of itself that provides the tax dollars so that we can reinvest it into properties that have been for McKinney, a challenge initially. And then we want to see that flourish. That's the whole point. Now, we've seen downtown flourish significantly. I want to see TERS too, also flourish in that same light so that it can be an economic benefit to our city.
So along those lines, you both mentioned downtown and how we love the square area. There are newer businesses that are setting up more or less on the outskirts of town, both on the east side and on the west side. And a lot of people have commented on the modern, the, how these are like modern structures and don't really tie in with the more historic look. How do, where do you strike a balance on bringing in new business but not changing the landscape of downtown? Dr. Feltes?
Actually, this is one of my priorities. When I came, when I was running for council in my first race, that was one of the top reasons, reasons that people or issues that residents brought to me. There was concerns about the residents there constantly having to defend their community against modern development. There were comments from business owners about the same thing. And so I've worked with the community. I've worked with city staff. And now we have a designation as a certified local government. What does that do for us? It makes sure that we have the tools that we need to create ordinances and enforce ordinances so that we do not drastically change the fabric of downtown. Downtown is the heart and soul of McKinney. It always will be, and we need to make sure that we protect that constantly. So I have been on the battlegrounds with people like Nina Ringley back there, making sure that we're fighting against changes that really are not consistent with the fabrics that we have created here in our downtown area. I remain committed to doing that in my next term as well.
That is the, did you have something? Sorry.
Ms. Warren.
I apologize. Go ahead. Ms. Warren.
I was actually going to echo the same thing. I'll commit to doing the same thing. I think it's very important that we keep McKinney McKinney. Our downtown is our pride and joy. We all love it. We all enjoy it. And we just need to be careful with the things that we do here and just make sure that, that they are pleasing to the eye and, I'm, I'm, I'm getting tongue-tied here, but what she said, I'm going to commit to doing the same thing. Make sure it's beautiful and lovely and keep McKinney McKinney. Keep downtown downtown. Yes.
But it's also important that we have a plan for that, right? That doesn't just come easily. And so that's the intention of having ordinances in place. It's the intention of working with the community directly to understand what their needs are. It is making sure that our real estate community understands what the historic district is. Because when they bring someone in to purchase a house, they need to know what they're getting into as well. But that takes very strategic planning. How do we battle against- How do we battle against outsiders who are coming in trying to change the fabric of what we're doing here in McKinney? And once again, the certified local government is kind of one of the first steps that we'll be making. We'll see some other things coming down the pike here very soon.
That's the end of the group questions. Each of you has one individual question. And out of respect for the sensitivity of these two questions, I would ask that you not attempt to rebuttal your opponent. Fred, you go first.
So first up, Mrs. Warren. The recent incident regarding the McKinney Police Association endorsement of your opponent has become quite entangled. What is your plan to give voters confidence in your abilities to exercise level-headed decision-making and sound judgment when faced with urgent and difficult situations on council that do require a delicate touch?
Well, do you want me to answer the question about the FOP? Or do you want me to? Okay, well, I'm not sure I can do it in two minutes.
However you please. It's your choice.
So I have updates for you, some really good updates for you. I had a wonderful phone call today with the McKinney Police Association. And we air, and, and we, we sorted things out and it was a great conversation. And they're wonderful people, wonderful men and women that are volunteering their time for that organization. This afternoon, some interesting things happened. I had a friend who said, Tammy, I want to look at your email server. I want to see what's going on there. And I gave him the keys to the kingdom and he looked at my email and he said, ah, there's a problem. He also alerted the, he also alerted the McKinney Police Department or the FOP. And they had the same problem. And I'm not making this up because I thought it was weird too. They are not getting my emails. I am not getting their emails. So when they say they didn't hear back from me, they're telling the truth. When I say they didn't, that I didn't hear back from them, I'm telling the truth. I have a statement from them. If you'd like me to read it, they are sending out an internal memo tomorrow. So we cleared it. We're all friends. They know that I support them. They know that I love them. They know that I back them. It was just a horrible, horrible miscommunication. And I did apologize. I did apologize on Facebook. And I thought, you know, maybe I shouldn't have posted that. But now I'm, now I'm glad I did because now they know to look in their spam box. And now I look, and I know to look in mine. But you can trust me to be professional. I've held my job 21 years. You can trust me to be positive. You can trust me to get the job done. If I say I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it. So that's that. Oh, and I have some more good news. I just got endorsed by Sheriff Skinner. So I want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Dr. Feltes, many of your opponents have labeled you as a proxy for George Fuller and others who invited you to run in 2021. What is your plan to give confidence to the voters that a second term in office for you will be your own and not merely an extension of the agendas of people no longer in office?
Very interesting question. I've, I've heard this sort of misnomer that I am, I don't have my own mind. I don't make my own independent thoughts. And let me say something. Meaningful leadership is not picking a fight for the sake of being different. Meaningful leadership is looking at an issue, doing the work, asking the hard questions, engaging the community, engaging our community leaders, and then making a decision based on wisdom and discernment. And that's what I've done for the last four years. And that's what I would do no matter who sits in the mayoral seat. I know a lot of this kind of comes from the airport. And George and I kind of align a bit on the airport in most ways. But that doesn't mean we always align. And if you look at how we have voted over the last four years, I don't agree or disagree with him more than anybody else sitting next to me on that dais. Not at all. But let's not get it twisted. I didn't get to where I am in life by being an idiot with no brain and no sense, no compass in life. I went to a great institution. I was at one of the best pre-med programs in the state of Texas. And when I got there, they asked me to be in their leadership because they saw the influence that I had on my own peers. When I got to Wake Forest for medical school, I was doing the grind of learning that information. But my peers asked me to step up and represent them. And that's what I did. Did the same thing in residency. I got to McKinney. I was just volunteering because I love volunteering. I love doing the work in this community. But my peers came to me and asked me to step up and get into some leadership positions. And that's what I have done. You don't get here by just following everyone else. You get here by making wise decisions, being measured, asking the Lord for discernment, and then moving forward with good decisions. I have done that for four years. I'm going to continue to do that in my next term.
Okay, ladies, closing statements for both of you. Ms. Warren, you have, what, what did we say? One minute? Or two minutes?
Two's fine.
Two minutes.
Wow, that went fast. I have to applaud Jurey. She's very well spoken. She's very well educated and I appreciate about that about her. I'm a little bit more nervous and tongue tied. And I'll tell you, when I started serving on these boards in McKinney, I felt the same way. I felt like a fish out of water. My very first board was the bond committee board. I didn't know any of those people. I was out of my element. I was asked to be there because my voice was different. And I was very, very, very nervous to even say anything. But by the end of that, we got a wonderful package together to present to the community and they passed the package. I'm very, very proud of that work. The same when I was asked to serve on the charter review committee. I sat in there and I'm like, I don't know these people. I'm very, very nervous. Where's my voice? Where's my voice? But you know what? I have a voice and you have a voice and your voice is important. And your issues are important and your concerns are important. And I have found my voice. I'm still a little bit wobbly, but I'm getting there. And I have ideas and I've been at the doors every day. I have knocked over 1,200 doors myself. My husband has knocked over 1,500 doors. My team is closing in on 8,000 doors. We are talking to the voters every single day, listening their voice. They feel like they haven't been heard. They feel like they've been dismissed. They feel like they're losing the beauty of McKinney and what it is, and they want it back. And I'm here to tell you, I will listen to you. I will work hard for you. And I'm so excited to serve and I'm so excited to be up here today. This little old girl who, you know, was a stay home mom and, and a glorified secretary. You know what? I'm proud to be here. I'm really happy to be here. I'm happy to what I've accomplished. I'm happy that I used to be that angry person in the crowd that was, and I've turned that around. I've turned it into a positive. I can do something good for this community if you'll let me. Thank you so much. I hope to earn your, earn your vote.
Dr. Feltes, two minutes.
I'm going to take a deep breath. I am proud to be here because I've done the work. I am proud to be here because it's not all empty promises and a bunch of talk. I don't do a ton of talking. Most people know that I don't do a lot of talking in public because I like to think and research and get input from other people before I make a decision. But I have a proven record and I think it shows. The last four years, we have worked really hard. We have worked hard to lower the property tax rates every year. And it's, we've done more of that than any other four-year period before me. We have the lowest effective tax rate that we've had in decades. We have one of the safest communities of, of our size. We have the number one housing market in the United States of America. We have so much to be proud about. We have so much to be proud about. And I am proud of the people that I've served alongside in order to get us where we are here today. We have, I have been a champion for the historic district because I know that it is the one thing that keeps us feeling like McKinney. That is what makes us unique, is the people. And I want to make sure that we do right by the citizens of McKinney. That is my number one goal. So we're going to move forward. We are going to keep pushing McKinney in the right direction. We're going to do that by being smart, having smart growth. We're going to do that by engaging our residents on a very regular basis. But we're just going to make wise decisions moving forward. I am seeking your support as I run for reelection for District Three here in the city of McKinney. Let's keep moving together. Let's finish what we started together. Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, one of these two ladies will be your next District Three councilperson. Let's show them one more time, a round of appreciation for them coming out tonight.
All right. Thank you so much for those who say we're very, just really looking forward to our at-large debate. We want to just take a quick moment to thank our sponsors. So Helen Barilas with Personalized Touch, we're grateful for her. Trish and Mark Littlejohn with TriMark Home Construction, taking care of our snacks. We really appreciate you all. Jason Vallow with Goodness Steak Seasoning. Stacy Weaver, who's running for Collin College. And then finally, Craig International, David and Sabrina Craig. We are super grateful. We could not do this event without them. Let's give them a big round of applause, please. And now we're going to have our candidates to come up. And I want to introduce them one at a time and they will come and take their spots. We did order them according to alphabetical order. So up first is Dr. Taha Ansari. So let's welcome Dr. Taha Ansari. I am awesome. And then we have Jim Garrison, followed by Ernest Lynch, Brian Magnuson, and Derek Tarver.
All right, guys. Let's get after it. We're going to do opening statements in the order that was drawn from a random number generator from the internet. Thank you, Google. Really appreciate that. Jim, you were, you're first. Jim Garrison, opening statement.
Well, good evening. Thank you for being here. My name is Jim Garrison. I'm running for city council at the at-large position. I bring about 35 years of experience in, to the table here. That's going to be in the form of elected and appointed positions. I've served on city council in Capel. I was also on the Economic Development Board. I was a liaison to the DFW Airport Expansion Committee. That's going to be a huge thing in just a little bit. Also was currently, I'm in my second term as vice chair for Building and Standards Commission right here in McKinney. I'm also the president of the Villages of El Dorado HOA. And we have 742 families that the board and myself gets to serve. I'm excited for McKinney. This is going to be some of the most unbelievable fun years with all the different projects going on. I think the experience that I do bring to the table is going to be important. This is not going to be the time where we're doing on-the-job training. You got to come in ready to go. Two of the biggest projects coming up are going to be certainly the airport and then of course, the 20,000-seat amphitheater. I do bring some experience to the amphitheater that don't think any candidate in any race does. And that is, I've actually flown up to Colorado Springs twice to see that venue up there. I wanted to see it in person. I wanted to see what the facility looked like. I wanted to hear an event there. That project is going to be unbelievable. It is going to bring such fun things to McKinney. It's going to be the flagship concert venue for not just McKinney, but also all of North Texas. It's these kind of projects that we need to have the anchor to bring us in the retail and the restaurants that everybody seems to think we need, and we do, to keep the tax base at the level we need it to be to take care of the infrastructure items. Once again, Jim Garrison, running for city council at large.
And next up, we have Dr. Ansari.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming out here. It's really humbling experience to be here and you guys took your time to come out here. So thank you so much. So my name is Dr. Ansari. I am actually a child and adolescent psychiatrist. I work at the Veterans Affairs. I work with substance, kids with substance abuse, adult with substance abuse. I'm actually on the faculty for Baylor Scott &amp; White College of Medicine in Temple, Texas. So a lot of people want to know, why does a psychiatrist want to run for election, right? So to be honest, I was away from Collin County for the last nine years, from 2011 till 2020, 2019, sorry. And every single day I was in New York, I missed being in McKinney and Collin County. I hated every single moment in New York. I always wanted to come back and I wanted to serve my community. And which is what I did. I came back here in 2020 and I did the best I can as a psychiatrist. But every time I talk to my patients, I see that we're all struggling. People are living paycheck to paycheck. Substance abuse. Our children are having a hard time in school. So that is why, that inspired me to run. Our veterans are having a hard time. They can't navigate the VA system. So that inspired me to run. But the most important thing actually that I wanted to run is I felt that your voice is not being heard. And I want you to ask that question. Is your voice being heard in the city? Is it? That is why I'm here. I'm here because I want to make sure that your voice is heard. You're the inspiration why I'm here. Thank you.
And now let's hear from Ernest Lynch.
Please through here. Good evening, all. Thank, that's what I was afraid of. Take a picture. There you go. Ernest Lynch solves problems. That'll be a new campaign slogan. But again, good evening. I appreciate all of you being here this evening. My name is Ernest Lynch and I'm running for city council at large. Tell you a little bit about me. Born and raised in Odessa, Texas. I've got oil and sand in my veins. Lifelong Texan. Spent the last 38 years running hospitals and large healthcare organizations. And during those 38 years, I, I learned how to deal with complex projects from their inception to their completion, to their operation. Learned how to deal with complex organizations. Learned how to communicate through complex organizations. And most importantly, learned how to listen. You simply cannot run a hospital as complicated with the issues there without learning how to listen. No disrespect to the physicians in the room. But if you can listen to physicians, you can listen to anybody. Dr. Feltes and Dr. Ansari will, will appreciate that. But again, bring a vast amount of experience, an executive role. For the last 20 some odd years, I've served in a lot of community capacities. I've given back to McKinney over the last couple of decades. I retired again recently in 23 years as being the CEO of Medical Center McKinney.
I apologize.
Okay. All right. There we go. But I've served in a lot of community capacities. I've served as chairman of the board of MEDC. I've served as chairman of the board of the Chamber of Commerce. I've been on NEF. I've served on McKinney Alliance. I've served on the surrendering board. I was a member of the historic district before it got its Main Street designation. So I have a vast combination of community experience and commitment and service. And the reason I'm running simply is McKinney has given me so much and given so much to my family. I'm giving back. I'm retired. I've got full time to commit to this endeavor and give back to the community that I care so much about.
And I do apologize, Mr. Lynch. That was just strictly Pavlovian of me. We ask that you would please put your phones on silent or vibrate or turn it off so that we can preserve the sanctity of the moment here. So I do apologize for that. So next, let's hear from Mr. Brian Magnuson. Oh, sorry. From Derek Tarver.
Hi, everybody. My name is Derek Tarver. I'm born and raised here in McKinney, Texas. I am a leadership alum that's going to graduate here next month. Born and raised on the east side of McKinney. I'm here with unique by nature in my veins. I'm here to support everybody in this room. My goals is when I win this election is that I'm going to listen to you. My goal is to support everybody in this room. It's not my vision on what I want to do for this city. It's what the citizens need to do for the city.[1685.49] My goal is to support everybody in this room. It's not my vision on what I want to do for this city. It's what the citizens need to do for the city, and that's what I'm with. It's supporting everyone in this room with infrastructure, with making sure we have great public safety, with making sure we're getting our school, our kids in school, our big thing, airport. I got things that I can talk to you about that, but I'm all about the citizens of McKinney. I'm big on keeping McKinney unique by nature. That is my goal, is to work with each and every one of you in this room because I'm very accessible. I don't mind meeting with anyone. I will come anywhere and meet you at any time if I'm not at work. But like I said, I'm willing to work with anyone to get your needs across, your voice across, to help McKinney be unique by nature.
And then let's hear from Mr. Brian Magnuson.
Thank you, Derek, for saving some time. Can I use this time? No, I'm just kidding. Hello, my name is Brian Magnuson. Many of you know me already. Thank you for showing up. It's fantastic to have the support of our citizens here. This is the at-large race. Just a little bit about me. If you don't know me, I have been here for twenty years. My wife and I moved with my son John when he was one-year-old, and we have a debt of gratitude to McKinney. It has been nothing but a fantastic place to raise our two children, our youngest. Anna is in college. And the community as a whole, but especially the arts community, has blessed us over and over and over again. You know, I have two outstanding young children, now young adults, who are making an impact in their own ways. So a lot of that to McKinney. And so I love to serve as everyone. So twenty years of living here has brought me to a connection to so many people throughout our community. In that, I've taught for the last twenty-five years. My career is teaching. I've been now currently teaching in McKinney, McKinney and Boyd. I'm an art teacher there. Love our children, love our future. We have a great future, but there are some concerns there. So we need to think about that as a city as well. I played football, University of Tulsa, Division One, wide receiver, go Hurricanes. So, you know, that experience was very vital to where I'm standing up here as now. And I also was in the United States Army. Sorry for all the other ones, but hey, Army's still best. No, okay. Hoorah. So I love and bravo infantry. So all those experiences gave me the skills and character that I need as I come up here to serve you, as I do in my classroom, as I do on the Arts Commission. I'm giving back to the art. In the Arts Commission, I've been the vice chair. We did some really amazing things this past cycle. Got a great partners out here. Thank you for supporting. But we did really, really fantastic stuff as an art commission. We hadn't had a really substantial raise in our in our funding, which we were able to do, and it was a pretty integral part to that. So thank you all for being here.
Okay, candidates, as a friendly reminder, I want to thank Andy Harvey Rogers back there for running time. The yellow card is thirty seconds. The red card is ten seconds. And when you hear that friendly little ding, that means stop talking. Okay, we are a little behind schedule, so we're just going to plow right ahead. We have four questions for all of you, and then an individual question for each of you at the end. We're going to start with Dr. Ansari first, and then for the next question, we'll start with Mr. Tarver first, and just keep rocking. Now that we have an increased amount of liquor stores and vape shops in McKinney, do you think it's possible that this is leading to an increase in crime, Dr. Ansari?
So, good question. I've actually looked at the data. McKinney is actually a very safe city to live in. As far as are the liquor stores increasing proper crime rate, we actually don't have any data on that, which is a good thing. So in fact, overall, in general, we're doing pretty good in terms of that. What I am concerned about is the amount of vape shops and use of marijuana. So I, as a psychiatrist, I've seen kids using the vapes, marijuana, starting at age eleven. A lot of these kids, they're, it's, and it's mixed with a lot of K2. It's mixed with spice. I don't know what's in there. So I'm against that, actually. So Senate Bill Three was recently passed on March nineteenth. I'm actually an advocate for that. I think that we need to have strict rules, especially protecting our children when it comes to illicit drugs in vape shops. And to be honest, as a psychiatrist, you know, I'll tell you that our kids' brains that develop until age twenty-five, you know, we have something called synaptic pruning. Substances like marijuana, you know, they actually hinder the brain growth. And to me, that's a big thing. And I would, I'm a smart advocate for against it.
Mr. Garrison.
Sure. There's, there are no studies or any reports that kind of back up any higher crime rate because we've got the liquor stores and the vape stores. The good thing is, is that the state regulates liquor stores quite heavily. So the chances or opportunities for any illegal activity is pretty rare, unless you're just talking about robbery. But the problem is with the vape stores, that is pretty much an unregulated industry. It's so new, they haven't gotten around to regulate it like it should be. And I do believe there's the potential, the possibility for issues just within sides of some of those stores and what they're selling. So yeah, I think we do need to be paying attention to that. I think we're probably about, last I heard, we're about twenty or thirty officers short. We need to get the police department up to full speed so that they can certainly do their jobs effectively and take care of any potential issues.
Mr. Lynch.
Yes, my position, particularly on the vape stores, obviously coming from healthcare background, I'm concerned about anything that would give additional access to possibly gateway drugs or any addictive drugs. So my first inclination is being opposed to more vape shops. Regarding the crime rate, though, your question about the crime rate, McKinney overall is a safe city. And I think the real focus needs to be on supporting our first responders, supporting our police and our fire department, making sure they have what we need to continue to maintain the safe streets and the safe city. And I'm proud to make you aware that I've been endorsed by the police and the fire department. And I think the real focus on crime is to continue to support our first responders and our police and our firefighters to make sure that we continue to have a safe city.
Mr. Magnuson.
I'll start with vape shops as well. As a high school educator, they are a problem. There's something that needs to be addressed. My students have clearly told me that it's easy to go into a vape shop and pay cash and get what they want, as long as they don't pay with a credit card. So we need to have enforcement. We need to be on this because it is a detriment to our community. And we have a wonderful community. Like I said, a lot of young, beautiful lives, but they are going to be messed up. You already see it with the AEP situations. Vape is a big, big problem in our school. It's a big problem in our community, and we need to make sure we're addressing that. As far as alcohol stores, internationally, nationally, there are studies that show that violent crime does go up. But is it the alcohol store itself? No, it's the moral people, right? If we're a moral people, we won't have those issues. And right now, McKinney, you know, we're still a fairly affluent community. We're still a fairly moral community. So I don't think we have the issues that a lot of bigger communities have, but when you start creating density, you do have more of a challenge with that. And to protect our police, to protect our people, we need to make sure that we're on top of that as well. Keep an eye on what's going on, making sure we're using wise decisions in this.
And Mr. Tarver.
Well, with vapes, I really don't agree. My brother is forty-two years old. He almost lost his life due to a vape. So that's something that I do not agree on. And as I see youth that I deal with every day, I see youth that smoke vapes, or their parents come to practice saying that their kids are hitting their vapes. Or I see kids walking down the streets hitting vapes. I do not agree with it. It is an unsafe act. Alcohol, my opinion, when you do add alcohol closer to certain neighborhoods, it does draw crime. It does. And the more people that you see at the alcohol is the people that are less fortunate. So here in McKinney, you see more of the homeless people that are near our areas where alcohol is. That's where we get a lot of the traffic of, you know, our people that are using subsidized drugs. So we do need to get with the police department for our safety. So yes, I do not agree with the alcohol places here, and I do not agree with vapes.
All right. Thank you for that. Now, the next question, we're going to start with Mr. Tarver. How do you plan to address McKinney's long-term infrastructure needs, including water and transportation, while ensuring responsible and sustainable development?
So I've learned, I went to the Senate last week. I've learned that we are a hundred and fifty-four billion dollars that we're going to have to deal with with the infrastructure of water within the fifty-four years of with the water supply that we do have in the state of Texas. McKinney uses four hundred thousand gallons of water a month here in McKinney, Texas. So our water levels are low, right? So with that being going on, with the infrastructure of growth in McKinney, we're having water problems. So as we grow throughout the city of McKinney, our water levels are going to get low. So now we're working with the North Texas Water District on getting different tunnels added here from Ora City, Texas, or we buy water from Mesquite, Texas, or different areas because our water levels are very low. Could you give me the second question?
It's like, how do you still ensure responsible and sustainable development?
Transparency. We need to begin with each other, communicating with each other, making sure we have smart growth, making sure we're bringing in businesses where families can afford to still stay here if they're from here. I'm from here. I want to continue to raise my family in this city. So we have to have transparency with the citizens to make McKinney better.
All right, Mr. Magnuson.
Absolutely. Hello, testing one, two, three. All right, can you hear? Oh, wait, now you can. Okay, I can use my whole voice. My teacher voice about to come on. All right, water, absolutely. Something that I've been concerned about basically since I got here. Came down from Oklahoma, came to Texas, and what do we know about Texas? It can be very dry. And then we had a population of about sixty thousand people, I think we moved here, and a drought started, you know? And then we went for years through a very serious drought. Lake Levon was very, very short, and now we have two hundred and thirty, basically, thousand people here. We have an issue, right? We do have a new lake reservoir that they created for us, but if it doesn't rain, it doesn't get filled up. We need to be really wise about what we're doing. And of course, that comes down to finances, and it comes down to how we grow. The idea of growth, what is growth? What does that look like? So we need to grow in ways, but we don't necessarily always need to grow in density in population because our natural resources can't hold the density that some people would desire. So we have to be careful about how we define growth, what we're defining. Is it just adding new people constantly? So we have to be very careful and strategic about, you know, what can our natural resources hold in this area? So I think that's something we really need to discuss. And for me, it's all about connecting. I'm a connector. Making sure we're working with our water district, working with other cities around us, working with our council, working with the citizens, making sure they understand responsible water use is very important because we do live, it's like in Arizona, you have to be careful about how you're using water. So we need to make sure the message is clear. We got to be not just hearing, but we also be transmitting a message to the people.
If the candidates would please stay behind their tables in the interest of time. I'm sorry. I know. You can come out for your closing statements, though. Mr. Lynch.
Thank you. When you talk about infrastructure, you have to look at it as I see it in two different areas. Number one, maintaining your current infrastructure. You have to have an aggressive, proactive, financially feasible mechanism to look at your current infrastructure, to maintain your maintaining pedestrian-friendly, quality roads, also the things. None of us in here want to spend any more time in our cars, so I think we need to apply smart technology to traffic control. So you have to look at your existing infrastructure. Regarding planning for the future, again, a practical, proactive growth strategy where you look that the growth is smart, it fits an overall master plan, it maintains the uniqueness of the community, but you have to have a vision forward. You need to look forward, not looking in your rearview mirror, because if you're looking at your rearview mirror all the time, you're running off the road, you're having a wreck. So you need to have a vision, you need to have planning. Some of my experiences, I've planned very complex projects from their inception to their construction, to their completion, to their operation. But I think in the infrastructure standpoint, you have to be forward-looking to provide for the growth. You need to listen to the voters and listen to all the stakeholders involved in those decisions. But you have to balance that with maintaining your current infrastructure and have a smart plan to do that. And we've talked a little bit about water. Obviously, that's going to be a driving force for growth, and you're going to have to work with the water district to ensure that you have water supplies for the growing community.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Mr. Garrison.
Yeah, certainly, water is certainly the next valuable commodity. It just is. And we, unfortunately, we don't get to just drive that thing all by ourselves. We have to participate with county, with the North Texas Water Commission. So we need to make sure we have a seat at the table and a voice to be heard. Technology is going to be a huge thing moving forward with the infrastructure. You're going to, we should have a drinking game where if you hear the word "infrastructure" tonight, you just have to drink there because it's, it's, that's, it is the key word. It's the one thing that everybody, I think, does agree on, that it's the most important thing moving forward here in McKinney. And technology is part of that infrastructure. In regards to water, the city does have some unbelievably good plans and systems in place right now to be able to track water usage. They can detect an issue within minutes of it actually happened. And the conservation side of that is huge. It's going to be important to keep that intact. Also, one thing, when you do hear the word "infrastructure," everybody talks about, oh, we got to have it. We got to make sure it is part of the city, part of the growth. The one thing I don't hear a whole lot about is how you're going to pay for it. And I'm going to circle back to two very big projects that are going to be doing just that, and that's going to be the airport, and it's going to be the twenty thousand-seat amphitheater. You're going to need those projects to finance the infrastructure and moving forward.
Okay, follow-up question on that, because as we talked about in the first round. Well, it, can I not have a follow-up question for? Okay, that's all. We'll do it after. Dr. Ansari. We're new at this, you guys. I'm sorry. We're doing the best we can down here. We're podcasters. Dr. Ansari, your answer, and then I will ask my follow-up question. I apologize.
If you want to look at the questions here, you actually have to do the research, and you actually have to have the numbers, right? McKinney has actually grown fifteen percent since two thousand twenty, okay? And we're growing by two point five percent every year. That puts a strain on our water and infrastructure, right? We're building unnecessary projects that don't benefit us, right? Such as the airport, for example. I'm against the airport, by the way. So how do we address this issue? Water, we're actually at eight percent loss, you know? That's actually pretty good. The state average is seventeen percent. So we're doing a pretty good job, and we need to maintain that. If you're going to build a water park, I don't know how that's going to go. So and we're actually using smart technology. You know, we're actually using AI to actually detect water loss in the city of McKinney. That's, that's where the, as far as the water goes, that's where we're headed. We're using smart AI technology. As far as infrastructure, we have a problem on three eighty. We need to start implementing AI when it comes to infrastructure, using smart technology to work on traffic flow. This is the future, and this is what we need to look forward to in the future.
Okay, our next question was going to be on economic development, but it really dovetails with the follow-up question. The TERS has been, was brought up in a previous question. With regard to these very large development projects and economic development in general, how will you, as councilman, approach the subject of revenue growth for the city at large? Because there's a lot of complexity in the TERS, and with the airport, with the amphitheater, with downtown, a lot of those increased revenues are locked up inside the TERS. How will you find workarounds, find new solutions, and be more leveled across the city where the revenue is not just going back into the TERS and the rest of the city is left behind? Yeah, we'll start with Dr. Ansari.
All right. Thank you for the question. So it's simple. Economic growth, right? It's simple. We need jobs. We need to stay here, right? So how do we achieve that? We have, our average household income is one hundred and twenty thousand, right? We need to maintain at that, and we need to make sure that we are, it's affordable for us to live here. So if we look at from an economic standpoint, if you guys invest here in the stock market, you guys all diversify your portfolio, right? You guys don't just say, hey, let's build an airport and hope that economic growth happens around that area. No. You don't put our stock in Tesla and expect, hey, this is our all eggs in one basket, right? You need, what we need to do is look at all sectors where we get high-paying jobs. We need to start looking at healthcare, technology, education, retail, small businesses. We need to start investing in these projects. This is long-term growth, okay? And we need to bring in new companies. Like Tammy said, we have Raytheon, Encore, and blanking out the third one. We need to start bringing new sectors in McKinney. That is long-term economic growth. That is what we need to work on. People need jobs. Not a lot of people can work at the airport. Not a lot of people can work at the amphitheater or the water park. We need high-paying jobs so you can afford to live here, period.
Mr. Garrison.
Well, I believe the question was in regards to TERS. So we've got two TERS here in McKinney. We've got TERS One and TERS Two. TERS One is the downtown historic area. TERS Two is the airport. The TERS One is the only reason, the absolute only reason, the downtown looks like what it looks like now. A few years back, doors were shuttered, windows were boarded up, and look what we have now. The money that's going back into the TERS One is actually that same money that restores the downtown area. We're talking buildings that are over a hundred years old. The city's been working on replacing all the lead pipes. It's been an eight-year program. They're finally wrapping that up. There are so many things that are going on that aren't necessarily sexy, but it's got to be done. It's stuff you don't get to see, but it costs a lot of money to fix it. So that's TERS One. TERS Two exists for another reason, and that's for the airport. A lot of folks don't know this. Raytheon, good example, they poured one point five billion dollars into the community, into their expansion. They've said it ten years ago. They're seeing it again today. The only reason that they're doing that, the only reason that campus got one point five billion for the expansion was because of the airport and McKinney. That's it. So you can't just look at the airport and the territory right there. Their impact exceeds far of just the airport. We're talking companies like Raytheon that are able to get their company to say, yeah, McKinney's pretty cool. They've got an airport. We can do all of our test pilot, piloting out there. This is the place to be.
Mr. Lynch.
Yeah, I think the question was more about the approach that you would take as a councilman around some of these complex projects. And what I would tell you is I would apply the same discipline that I applied over thirty-eight years of my career when I have multimillion-dollar projects that I, again, have to start from inception through construction, through financing, and responsible for return on investment. So what I would tell you is all these complex projects with all the different financial So what I would tell you is all these complex projects with all the different financial vehicles to fund them, all the sources of revenue, I, I would apply business discipline to making sure that they financially make sense, they financially have the return and that they yield an, an impact to the community and a benefit to the community overall. I think you have to bring that kind of business discipline to these big projects because, simply because of the, the long-term sustainability of the projects and the long-term revenue streams. It needs discipline, it needs to look at from the financial standpoint. And I've done that over 38 years, looking at all these complex multimillion-dollar projects and having to deal with those projects and communicate the nuances of those projects and communicate the success of those projects. That's what I would bring to it.
Mr. Magnusson.
We live in a very educated community. We are so blessed and it's not just the degree people have. I mean, we have a lot of people with degrees, but you know, sometimes they're less educated than people without degrees. We have people that are working hard. We have over 200 new businesses, upstarts. We have a lot of ingenuity here. The thing is relationship. You got to have relationships, you got to be able to talk. The expert isn't always the person holding the microphone, right? It's the person across from the microphone. It's people out here connecting businesses, connecting ideas, getting people to unify. Obviously, with the question was, we have TERS, what's happening outside of TERS, right? So we need District 1, District 2, District 3, District 4, places that don't have the TERS. We need to make sure that we're getting in there, having communications, negotiating, helping them out, making sure that their needs are being met. And as a councilman, to have oversight, to make sure that whatever is, they're asking for is being heard by the staff, is heard by the community, is communication both ways, is being told, but also listening.
Mr. Tarver.
Well, my thoughts on that is, um, we need to be working with city managers, with the whole city council to figure out what businesses we're going to be bringing in to help with those TERS. We should work with everybody to make sure when they, these businesses come in, that families can afford, they can pay families to afford to live in McKinney. A lot of things is, we need to focus on keeping McKinney unique by nature. And if we're not working towards bringing the money in from the TERS to fix our roads and fix elderly family homes or fixing our schools or fixing sidewalks or fixing our roads, what are we doing? I understand we need an airport, I understand we need certain things, but what are we doing for the citizens of McKinney? I'm not worrying about an airport, I'm worrying about our people. Our people is everything. McKinney can't move without our people. Our goal is to help our people, citizens. We need our citizens to be our word and be our voice, not an airport. But do we let it affect my, affect my family? Yes, I born and raised right there. Those TERS that everybody's talking about putting money in, I can eventually lose my home. So TERS needs to be into the community.
All right, we haven't really had any debating yet. Does anybody want to jump in here? Any rebuttals of any of these comments made?
I wouldn't mind making a comment in regards to the TERS. A lot of folks don't know this, TERS 1 is a good example. If we didn't do anything, TERS 1 goes away in 2055. But here's the cool thing about that. Here's the annual report of TERS 1 for 2024. If TERS 1 has no debt, no indebtedness, this, the TERS, the, the TERS issue could be brought before the city council and voted on and made to go away in a second. And so there, in fact, matter of fact, there is right now, no indebtedness. There is no indebtedness at the airport. It's all taken care of. So you could simply vote it away when you want it to go away. So it's not a lifetime thing. It's not going to be there forever and ever. And once you do vote it away, any of that money now goes to the general fund. That's where you get your return, that's where you get the money from the airport.
Anybody else? Okay, next question, Brad.
Okay, so we've mentioned it a couple of times here already. What is your position on the proposed expansion of the McKinney National Airport? And how would you balance economic opportunity with concerns of nearby residents and the broader community? We'll start with Mr. Garrison.
Thank you. Obviously, I'm for the airport. So I, I think it's, it's important. The, the expansion of this airport didn't just happen overnight. This has been in the works now for over a decade. The runway has been expanded several times. We've got new hangars, a control tower. We've got a customs office now that meets federal standards. 12 years ago, the airport was in fact a liability. Now, the airport is the only liability, the only asset, the only asset the city has that makes and generates money. It's the only one. I talked to elected officials from all around the metroplex. They are envious of the fact that we have an airport that can actually make money and is not a liability. 12 years ago, the airport was a liability. You get folks like Raytheon, Encore moving in. Now all of a sudden, we're making $58 million. You look at today, the airport now has $300 million worth of economic impact. It is forecasted that once we get into passenger service, which by the way, we've got 400 operations a day right now, you get into citizen or to passenger service, we will go from 400 operations a day to 406. This is easy, manageable growth. This is not going to be a killer. You don't just flip the switch on airport expansion and all of a sudden you've got thousands of flights coming in. That's not the way this works.
Mr. Magnusson, you're next.
The airport, yes, it's been there for a long time. When we moved here, our old neighbor in Tulsa was actually, that was his job, is how to expand airports and all that. So we kind of have an, an understanding of what's going on for those that are educated in it. But I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to city council, and I've talked to the, the general public. The biggest issue that I think the airport, it's not about the airport. It's about the, the communication between all these entities, right? So the way I see it is kind of like when you go to the doctor's office, you have to have informed consent. The people don't feel like they've been informed and so they're not consenting to it. And that's the biggest issue, is a, a lack of communication between. It could be the greatest thing since the train came here. But we don't, we don't know, right? The people out there don't understand what's at stake. They don't understand who's holding all the liabilities when we do this. That's why they turned down the bond issue, right? Because they're worried about the liabilities. They're not sure about the liabilities of environment, even though there's been studies, but they're questioning some of those studies. And when we see the, the thing that was brought to my attention today was a survey. The survey, what I read into it was people don't know what's going on. You know, the only thing they knew was there's an airport. There's a lot of like misunderstanding. They don't know what's, what's at stake, they don't know what the benefit is. And so if it's such a, it's a thing that city council and this community and everyone needs to get together and, and come together and figure out what in the world we're actually dealing with. Who's going to hold the liabilities? Who's going to have the assets? How's it going to affect the general population for everybody?
Mr. Tarver.
Like I just said, it, it affects a lot of people. Let's just think about some of the families that's over there in the old McKinney with, with the airport expansion. Some of those families have been living in their houses from, since 1950. So how, how, what are they going to do when the airport expand? Are we gonna, are they going to get the right amount of money that they're going to, that they deserve for their homes? Are we going to be, are they going to be able to afford to go move to the opposite side of town? Or do they have to move to Sherman or Denison? Or do they have to move to Bonham? What are we going to do with the families when those TERS grow to push people out? What are we going to do to compensate the people that's there? Anybody, can anybody give me an answer? Because it's a lot, it's going to affect a lot of things. It's a lot of families that's been over there for 34 years. We own fifth and sixth generations of people that's been here, that, that are unique by nature. There are people that are from McKinney. I don't, I'm not saying that I'm just against the airport. I just see some of the things that what I've seen as a child growing up and seeing a lot of my friends getting pushed out, or families that have been pushed out, even though they're not my blood, but they're still my family because McKinney is unique by nature, right? That's what we stand on, that's what we live on. But as a city, what are we going to do for the people that are homegrown here? Are they going to still be able to live in our city? Are they going to still be able to walk across the street and talk to their family members across the street?
Thank you. Dr. Ansari.
We're a community, we're not a, we're not a connecting hub, first of all. So I'm against the airport expansion. I'm against the airport expansion. Now, the only argument here that I need is lack of community input. If there's a majority that says they don't want the airport, period, we shut it down, that's it. Now let's go into further detail, why also I'm against it. We talk about economic growth, okay? Let's talk about economic growth. How does it actually benefit? It's in the TERS zone, by the way. So any additional taxation that you get from that is going back in that, in that TERS zone. The general population does not benefit that, from that, doesn't go in general fund. So it benefits the people around the airport, but not the general population. So the negative impacts is that you get crime. We look at national studies, there's actually four times increase in crime around the airport. These are national studies, not local studies. When we look at health risks, people who live around the airport, there's actually studies that show that there's increased cardiovascular risks, there's sleep disturbances, mental health issues, substance abuse issues. These are issues that I care about. That's why I'm against the airport. But I would like to ask Mr. Jim and Ernest these following questions. DFW Airport actually is building Terminal F. They can actually sustain that growth. So why are we, why do we need an airport? And for, for six, six flights, $75 million for that? And Mr. Lynch, I have a question for you. Why haven't you given us a firm answer on where you stand? But people need to know.
Okay, so you posed a question to both Mr. Garrison and Mr. Lynch. But Mr. Lynch, first, your response to the original question. Yes, sir.
Great, I, I'll give you the answer on my position on the airport. First of all, you've got to listen to the voters and the voters absolutely spoke on, on the bond issue. So you have to acknowledge that and you have to listen to that opinion. Second of all, I think the new council coming in is going to have to do a phenomenal job of, and it focused job on communicating the nuances and the complications and, and the details behind that project. Third, I'm not privy, nor is anyone else up here privy to all the details because we're not incumbents around the pro formas, around all the detailed studies, all the discussions and all the negotiations. So my opinion on the airport is, I'm going to do my due diligence, I'm going to focus on the communication, make sure everybody understands the issues. And at the end of the day, I'm going to listen to the voters.
First, Mr. Garrison, Doc.
I have the battle for that answer. So you said you don't have the, all the data. All of us have the same data that everybody else here has, right? We have made a decision. Jim, I, I, Jim has made a decision, he's firm on that. You said you're retired, you have all the time in the world. I work 80 hours a week, I took my time to do my research and I came with my firm decision.
Are you privy to all the discussions that have been done with the airlines? Are you privy to any of the discussions they've had with the council? I mean, again, there is information and due diligence that, that someone sitting on the council is going to be privy to, that you're not privy to. I explained to you, my position was, listen to the voters, communicate the issues around the airport, do the due diligence, understand all the facts. I've never made a decision on any major project without fully understanding it and having a comprehension of the facts. And at the end of the day, I'll listen to what the voters and the facts say.
Mr. Garrison.
Thank you. As I mentioned at the top of this, I am the only candidate in any race that has actually served on the DFW Airport Expansion Committee. I know what expansions look like, I know what they can look like. You have to have a seat at the table to make this work. In regards to the expansion of the TKI, there was a $72 million thing that we're looking at to build the terminal. Here's the deal on that, 25 of that 72 goes towards the terminal. The remainder of that goes for the airport infrastructure just to support the general aviation going on right now. So forget everything else. We still have to spend money just to help general aviation continue out at the airport. That is a fact. The other thing is also that those funds are in place already. They weren't loans, they weren't taken out of the general fund. Those were monies given to the city from state funds, federal and CDC. So those are already in place. So we didn't, I say we, I wasn't on council, but the city did not have to go out and dig into the general fund to get those funds.
Would anyone else like to continue with rebuttal? Dr. Ansari, Mr. Magnus, and Mr. Tarver? Anybody?
I do. Jim, when were you on the DFW Expansion Committee?
Sure, that was when I was on city council in Capel, maybe for like in 1990 to 95.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, I was just wondering, it's very interesting, thank you.
Okay. All right, just point of order, we're running about 18 minutes slower than we intended to. Are you guys good to go for another 15 minutes? So we have one individual question each and then closing statements. Or maybe I should ask the audience, you guys good if we go about 18 more minutes? We good? Okay. Okay, Dr. Astami said he'll allow it, so we're going to proceed. Okay, there we go. Are you recording me right now? Is this going to go on Facebook? Okay. All right. Okay, so individual questions. I tried to make it the kind of question you can do whatever you want with. What are going to be your top two priorities as a councilman? And how will your professional experiences up to this point in your life help you achieve those two priorities? Dr. Ansari, you get to go first. We're just going to go left to right here.
I love how I'm being asked the first questions. So I'll tell you about this. People who are in higher positions like executives, they care about fiduciary responsibility, right? They quote that a lot when it comes to economic growth. I have been trained as a physician, so we look at more than fiduciary responsibility. We actually look at five things. We look at one, we look at autonomy, we look at beneficence, we look at non-almanficence, and we look at justice. What are those things? Your right to choose, do no harm, try to do your best. And four, do justice for all of us. So my candidates are great, I love these guys. They're actually, personally, I have nothing against them, right? But it's what they offer. It's the only offer, the fiduciary responsibility, versus I offer five. So that is why, that's what I have to offer.
Mr. Garrison.
One of the biggest things is going to be public safety. You can have the finest parks, you can have the finest retail establishments, you can have the best of everything. But if your family is not safe to enjoy them, that's a problem and that's unacceptable. So that will be one of my biggest focuses, is making sure our law enforcement, first responders have the tools, the resources they need to perform their jobs as well as they can. And I think also it's important to point out that you're going to need these projects that generate the, the economic impact to be able to provide salaries, benefit packages. They're going to attract and retain these, the city staff, law enforcement and first responders. So that's, that's my, that's my biggest goal is to make sure we keep public safety as, as it is. Because we do enjoy a very low crime rate here in McKinney.
Mr. Lynch.
My top two or three priorities, number one is going to be supporting the first responders. Again, everyone here wants a safe community. And so I think my, my number one priority has to be to stand with the police and the fire department. Again, been endorsed by both the police and the fire, I think that's a number one priority. Number two, we have to have smart, balanced growth. And we can all work around all the adjectives of what that means. But I think you have to have a vision for where you want the community to grow and to go. I, I, I think that we need to keep the, the charm that McKinney is and try to make that part of the balanced growth. And, and I want to lower the taxes. And the way you're going to lower the taxes is, is you're going to have that economic development and you're going to have a balance of commercial and residential projects and try to grow the tax rate and be responsible to, to the taxpayers. So public safety, smart growth, lower the taxes.
Mr. Magnusson.
Thank you, yes, the obvious things, right? Public safety. But what I think, what my main goal right now is just bringing civility to our, our council, bringing civility to our overall city, bringing communication, which is two-way communication. You know, have an idea, plan, kind of how to get the voices back and forth. You know, it's kind of the old school way because I think Facebook is very disruptive to our community. You notice I don't do a whole lot of posting on there because I see how people interact with each other on Facebook versus in person. I think we need to have, you know, moral character in our community. I think it's very important that we, we don't let technology run this train. You know, we got to make sure that we're putting the horse in front of the cart in everything we do. We got to remember that ad valorem is also not just sales tax, but it's also property tax. It makes our prices and our homes go up. We need to make sure that we're being wise about how we're, we're growing economically, but also culturally. As an art artist, I think that's very important, right? The quality of life, the beauty, you know, the things of that nature, you can't eat them. So we do have to focus on economics, but we also got to do it smartly, wisely, with care and empathy for everyone in our, in the complete community from all districts.
Mr. Tarver.
Number one is going to be public safety. Another thing is going to keep our value, is McKinney going to keep our value. Plus, I've been working at Encore for 13 years of my life and I've seen the growth. So I've seen some of the wonderful things that they've done, they've been good to. And I've seen the growth. So I've seen some of the wonderful things that they've done. They've been good to me. I've seen a lot of growth. I've seen it go from 900 employees to 1700 employees. With me being one of the people that's as employees come in, I interact face to face with them hand to hand. I'm giving them training tools. I'm giving them certain situations that go on in the in the in the plants or in the warehouses. So public safety, employee engagement, I mean, not employee engagement, community engagement and keeping the value of McKinney. That's what I'm all about.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We're gonna move into our closing statements now, and we're gonna go in reverse order from where we started. So first, we're gonna hear from Mr. Magnuson.
Thank you so much. Thank you again for being out here. Oh, man, I should go the other way. Yeah, I didn't know I had one. I thought I lost a long time ago. I'm sorry, not comedy stage. Matt's sitting too close to me, I think. But thank you for being here, honestly. Really, really appreciate it. I think you heard all of our voices. You see what we're about. You know, there's a lot of commonality that there are some things that, you know, create differences within us. You know, who's gonna represent you on the organization chart? Y'all know what that looks like? Citizens on the top. We make sure that's our priority. And the way we make sure they're priority is by communicating and it's two way communication. It's not just hearing because sometimes we hear, but we don't act on it, right? And so obviously running for an open seat, and I just think that you you have a great choice, a difficult choice. But I think a choice that represents you all, your voice, that listens to you, that makes wise and and discern decisions is very important. So I hope you all make a wise decision in your vote. Remember the 22nd, it's early voting through the 29th and May 30th election day. Thank you all again for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Magnuson. Mr. Tarver.
Well, thank everybody for coming out. So my my slogan that I had, that I try to get everyone with is that I'm McKinney made, McKinney raised, and I'm here to keep everything unique by nature. So with me running, my focus is you. Because my family, what we're taught, a family that stays together, prays together, right? So as a family as us, we're gonna stay together and pray together. So as McKinney, as natives, no matter if you're black, white, green, blue, purple or red, we're all family. So what I stand for is being family, no matter the color of race, because we all believe the same. So I'm here for each one of you. So that's why I feel like I should be the person that's right for the city of McKinney for at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tarver. Mr. Lynch.
See if I can sneak through there. All right. Again, I want to thank all of you for coming out this evening and taking your time. I want to thank all my opponents for for giving their time. And what I would tell you is, is from my perspective, I I bring a unique experience with 38 years in running large healthcare organizations. I have over two decades of commitment to the community. And I would tell you when I get to ask the question over and over again, why, why do you want to do this? You cannot be in healthcare and serve patients and families in situations that we've served families with without being a servant leader. You just it's servant leadership is part of healthcare. You simply cannot do it without being a servant. So I want to give back to the community. This community has been great to my family. And being a servant leader means you give back to the community. And again, I would ask for your consideration and ask for your vote. I bring the unique experience, the decades of experience, the decades in the community at various levels of involvement and truly want to serve and can give my full energy, my full time with being retired to serving all of you and all of McKinney and making McKinney a great city and build for a wonderful future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Dr. Ansari.
First of all, thank you, everybody for coming here. It's been an honor for me to run this campaign. And I'm really blessed to be running with you guys. I have nothing against you guys. It's just I want you guys to push me and I will push you further. So that that is because you want the best from McKinney, right? Now, I want to tell you, I told you why I'm running, right? I work 80 hours a week. I am funding this campaign, majority of it, 90% my own, because I believe in this campaign. I believe what I'm doing is correct. You see those signs outside that you have for me? I put those up myself at the front. Because if you really care about your community, you should put your money where your mouth is, to be honest, and your actions. That is what I want to do. Now, I asked you a question. Is your voice being heard? I really want you to ask that question. Is your voice really being heard? I want you to take back your city, make sure that your voice is heard, okay? I want every single one of you to vote. Doesn't matter for me or any of it can work for any of these guys. We're doing what we're doing is for the good of the community. You guys know what I stand for, right? If you don't, call me. My number's on the card. It's my cell number. You can reach out to me. That is why I'm running. You know, I care about you guys. I want you guys to make sure that your voice is heard. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ansari and Mr. Garrison.
Well, I believe that the best days are ahead of us here in McKinney. We can thank the current council, previous councils for setting the stage for some of the most exciting things to come to McKinney. One of the things I love about McKinney, and you always hear the unique by nature thing. One of the things that does make McKinney so unique is our downtown. We have something that no other city in Collin County has, and that's the courthouse. That is the anchor for the downtown. That is the reason it's so important to restore and retain that you that the downtown area and make sure that we do everything to keep it unique. We'd have 100 year old buildings down there that need to be kept and loved and taken care of. I am so excited about the the different projects that we've got going on. Mentioned the the 20,000 seat amphitheater, of course, the airport. But there's so many other things that will be going on and that will anchor the rest, the restaurants, the retail and the other business that'll be attracted to McKinney. That's what we need to do is be looking in that direction to, like I said, draw all these folks in here that can help the tax base for McKinney. I'm a small business owner also. So if anybody can appreciate a budget and payroll, that would be me. I remember when I first started my business about 35 years ago, scary first two years are scary. After two years, you go, I got this. And I do bring over 30 years of running my own businesses and those experiences to being city councilperson. Thank you so much.
And if we could have all of the candidates front and center on the stage here so that the audience here can take a photo because we know that our future representation is represented on the stage here tonight. And we just want to share once again, yeah, everybody come on in. We just want to say once again, you know, thank you to everyone who came out tonight and shared of your time to listen to these candidates. And we do want to remind you that early voting is from April 22nd through the 29th with the election day on May 3rd. And when May 4th rolls around, we are all still McKinney. We have our differences. Make your make your voice heard, go to the polls and encourage your neighbors and the ones who aren't here tonight to show up, turn up for that vote. But when May 4th hits, we're all still neighbors.